Good evening, everybody, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the East Windsor Regional School District. An advance notice of this meeting was provided at least forty-eight hours ago. Such notice provided the time, date, and location of this meeting and included the agenda to the extent it was known at the time. Notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with law. Minutes of this meeting are being kept by the Board Secretary and will be made available promptly to any member of the public requesting them from the Board Secretary at twenty-eight A Leshen Lane, Iced Town, New Jersey. Minutes will be provided at cost in accordance with board policy. Are there any board members present who believe this meeting to be in violation of the open public meeting mat? There being none, we may proceed. In compliance with the fire code of the state of New Jersey, I call your attention to the emergency exits for this room which are located behind the audience and to our left and right. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and equal liberty and justice for all.
Item C.
Having read the materials received, I move the agenda to be approved as submitted.
Second.
Pull the board, please. Ms. Brizzoli?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. LaRusso?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Item D.
Be it resolved that the East Windsor Regional School District may hold two closed sessions at this meeting. These closed sessions concern personnel, staffing report, non-rules, and the HIV report of May seventh, twenty twenty-five. Minutes of these closed sessions will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second.
Pull the board, please. Ms. Brizzoli?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. LaRusso?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
We will now move on to item two, which is a two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four audit presentation. Okay, we are going to flip the agenda and actually do our student representative report first.
Okay, good evening, everyone. As always, it is a pleasure to be here with you all and share some of our school's happening. So we'd like to start off our report with an exciting update. We have finally reached the time of the year where we are able to share our college decisions with you all. So I'm happy to announce that I will be attending Georgetown University in the fall with a major of global health on a pre-med track.
I'll be attending Carnegie Mellon University to study at the School of Computer Science.
On that note, let's celebrate the class of twenty twenty-five. You can check out the senior decisions page on the Instagram to see where everyone is headed next, whether it's college, the Army, the Air Force, or any other exciting paths. Our seniors also had their own special celebration on May second where they got the chance to take pictures with their friends and teachers to mark this huge milestone. We're so proud of all that we've accomplished in our last, in these four years of high school, and we look forward to ending the year strong.
Now getting into AP testing updates, the second week of AP testing is currently underway. These exams are critical opportunities for our students to potentially earn college credit after their year-long courses. Go back to all test takers, congratulations to all finished test takers. To accommodate the logistics of NHS-Lay testing, we'll be implementing a delayed opening schedule starting this Friday and continuing until next week. This adjusted schedule will ensure that proper testing conditions are met for students who are participating in the testing, and communications have already gone out to families via email and way-level Google classrooms, so check that out.
Now, to give students something to look forward to as they're in the midst of testing season, we have begun our planning for Ramboozle, which is Student Council's biggest end-of-year event that will take place on June nineteenth from eleven o'clock to two-ten. It will be an afternoon of food trucks, inflatables, games, and much more activities for students to participate in. This is a great way for students to celebrate the end of the year, so make sure to be in attendance.
Senior awards ceremony will take place on June third. Invitations were mailed out this past Friday, and we're looking forward to celebrating the accomplishments of our graduating seniors.
Next up, we're excited to talk about this year's senior trip happening on June sixth at Hershey Park from eight-thirty AM to ten-thirty PM. Seniors will get to spend the entire day enjoying the amusement park and a meal with their friends. It's the perfect way to celebrate the end of the year and make some final memories together, and we both are definitely looking forward to it.
We'll be hosting a special session to recognize the SEALAB literacy recipients on June fifth. This is a word in honor of students who have achieved proficiency in English and at least one other language. This will be a great opportunity for families and friends to celebrate SEALAB literacy-certified individuals.
Now, we are also happy to share that our HHS stage will be quite active in the upcoming weeks as students take the stage for multiple performances. For instance, our drama club will be hosting their one act on May thirtieth at seven PM featuring three original students who have written, produced, and performed plays. Tickets will be on sale soon for five dollars, so be sure to keep an eye out for them. Additionally, our school's South Asian Club, Ersoth, will be hosting their annual performance celebrating South Asian culture with fusion dances, a cappella, and skit on June seventh, and tickets will be available for six dollars and will also be on sale soon. Our students have worked extremely hard all year for these performances, so be sure to come to these amazing events and offer community support.
Pleased to share that the National Honor Society, or NHS Inducting Ceremony, was held last week. Congratulations to all the inductees on their role of heard recognition, and thank you to everyone who made this event a success, including the school administration and the NHS advisor, Mrs. Dryhouse.
Now, as the end of the year rapidly approaches, we have officially initiated the process of selecting our class and student council officers for the next school year. Student council applications were open today and are due this Friday, and interviews for all potential candidates will take place on Thursday, the twenty-third. The interviews will be conducted by our student council advisors, Ms. McDougal and Ms. Blanford, as well as the current student body president, Jasmine Nationalis. By next meeting, we hope to introduce you to next year's Board of Education representatives, so we are very excited to see who will be representing our student body in the upcoming year. Stay tuned for our incredible students, we know they will be doing an incredible job. This concludes our report for tonight, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We will now move on to our two thousand-
Can I just ask a question?
Sure, absolutely, any questions?
I don't know if you'll be able to answer. Mr. Vincent might not answer. For Ramboozle, do we have any sort of rain date or accommodations if there's bad weather? We actually do have a rain date. I can pull it out. But just to accommodate for what happened last year, we do have one. I think it's June twenty-third as of right now.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. This is a simple one. The class trip, the senior class trip, do you guys have like a survey that you guys like pick like what you want, or is it just automatic, we're going to Hershey?
Oh, we, it was a whole survey process. We were debating between doing the cruises that have been done in past years, and then we also introduced Hershey Park. I think there was another option, but I don't remember, but this was a class of O, and this is what we're doing this year, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we will now move on to our two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four audit presentation. I'll hand it over to Mr. Todd.
Thank you, Ms. Lance. Tonight, we have the partner in charge from our auditors, Scott Clowland, who will be presenting the results of the twenty-three, twenty-four audit.
Thank you, Mr. Todd, and good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to present the results of the past audit. Before I get started, I want to thank the superintendent and Mr. Todd for all the time and effort they put in. During the audit process, as we are all aware, there was a lot of extenuating circumstances with the audit process this year with the significant vacancies in key positions and the illness who was in the business office the early part of the year. So it took a little bit longer than usual, we got there, and I want to thank Paul for pitching in more than he normally has because he didn't have the staff to assist us early in the audit process. So I want to thank him especially for jumping in. From an audit perspective, the audit is a clean opinion placed on it by the audit firm, which means the information provided was accurate for us to place such an opinion on the audit report. And overall, you have a very, very good financial position at the end of the fiscal year. Your overall financial position in your general fund increased by four point four million dollars. Also, you had a fund balance in excess of two percent, which equaled four point five million, or four point four million, I'm sorry, four point six million, which was utilized in your recently approved budget. You also prudently put funds aside in various reserves, which I wish more districts would do so, so they have funds set aside in difficult times. You have good funds set aside in capital reserve of about ten point four million. Those funds can be used to pay off debt service. They can, more importantly, they should be used to fund capital projects, and they also could be used towards any rod grants as a local portion if you ever get into additional rod grants. You also have put together or put aside maintenance reserve funds, which at the end of the year, you have about two point seven million, very consistent with the prior year. Your cafeteria operations did very, very well again. That continues to have a very good financial position. Just point over two point four million dollars of a fund balance or net position. And also, a couple of years ago, you put together a self-insurance fund for your health benefits. And in doing so, you set up a separate fund which allowed you to put the full liability of all claims that have been incurred and those in actuarial calculation comes up with what has been incurred but they you have not heard about yet. And the good news is that entire liability is set aside, so it's not affecting your net position. And in addition to that, you have about one point seven million dollars of funds set aside for any runoff claims or any other emergencies that come up in your health insurance plan due to the fact that you set it up as self-insurance. From a findings perspective, there are a couple more findings this year than we had in the past. Most of those items that we identified were in the first three or four months of the year. Most of that was attributable to, again, vacancies in key positions and illnesses in the board office. I talked to Mr. Todd about two things. One is trying to get the timeframe up a little bit earlier next year to get the audit done, and also talked about status of the findings. And I know that he has put before you as a board a corrective action plan which must be implemented as soon as possible. And I know from speaking with him, with Mr. Todd, a lot of those items have already been addressed and are currently being addressed. So we don't anticipate the same items again next year. Overall, again, good financial health of the district, and we look forward to continuing to work with the board and the district in the future, and I'm more than happy to address any questions you may have as a board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I do have one question. So you mentioned that you asked Mr. Todd for him to give you the information earlier, right? How much earlier were you, because the audit is from twenty-three to twenty-four, so how much earlier as opposed to the time you were given?
Our goal is to get the audit done in December as opposed to in February or March or so forth. So we're looking to move it back. What's happened in the past couple of years, the state has been, I guess, delinquent in getting us information, and they sped that process up. So most of the firms are now getting back into a normal timeframe, hopefully, so that audit reports can be issued before the end of the calendar year. And if I'm speaking to Mr. Todd, we're looking to meet that goal as well moving forward. So we're hoping to have this meeting in January or February of next year.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Okay, we will now move on to our superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's well tonight. So a couple of things I'd like to highlight. I do want to kind of go back for a moment. I know they just had the exit, but definitely wanted to congratulate our student representatives, Sahana and Sanji, for their college selections for the upcoming school year. Obviously Georgetown and Carnegie Mellon are impressive choices and reflective of the quality of education at Iced Town High School. As such, a quick look back as well, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week across the country, but definitely want to highlight one that we took some time to appreciate our educators within the East Windsor Regional School District community. Just want to thank our PTOs in particular who kind of really stepped up to kind of highlight and showcase their level of appreciation for the work of our educators, but also wanted to shout out and praise our teachers for the amazing work that they do day in, day out. A few event updates. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the National Honor Society induction ceremony for the class of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-six. I also want to congratulate our students for their accomplishments there. Also had an opportunity just to kind of share some updates regarding the college plans for the class of twenty twenty-five, members of the National Honor Society. So it's always, I think, for me, just reaffirming just to get a sense of what some of our students are doing and achieving, not just academically, but as you know, with the National Honor Society, there's a significant amount of energy, I would say, placed on service and a sense of community. So definitely proud of those students' accomplishments. Also last week, I had the opportunity, pleasure, I'd say, to attend the eighth grade concert. Did not have a chance to attend the sixth and seventh, but I would imagine the quality of performances were equally as impressive. I thought it was, I'd say for a middle school, having served as a middle school principal for almost ten years, that was, that was a very impressive concert. Also had the opportunity to attend the winter concert, so I tend to like to do somewhat of a comparison, and I would just say that I was thoroughly impressed with the level of progress, more than anything, that our students displayed as it relates to, just really their level of confidence, but also precision and discipline as it relates to performance. So very entertaining evening. um, and, and discipline as it relates to performance. So very entertaining evening. And I definitely want to commend the middle school music educators, uh, under the leadership of the, uh, visual performing arts supervisor, uh, Ms. Libby Gopal. Tonight, as it relates to, just, I mean, we have a number of, uh, performing arts events. I mentioned it at the last meeting. I'll say for tonight, actually, we have our, our GNR chorus concerts happening, uh, as we speak at the moment here at the auditorium. Uh, but also tonight we have our, well, this week I should say, uh, the remaining portion of the week, we have, uh, the PLD concert series, I'll call it. So tomorrow evening at six PM, uh, here at the high school in the auditorium, we'll have the fifth grade concert. Uh, on Wednesday, May fourteenth, here at the high school auditorium at six PM, again, we'll have the fourth grade concert. And they'll conclude the performances this week with the third grade concert, and that'll be back at PLD, uh, in the gymnasium. So I definitely encourage, uh, whether you are directly connected to PLD or not, to, uh, to try to attend at least one of those, uh, performances. Um, mentioned this at the last meeting, but I'll just highlight it again. We are in the throes of, uh, state assessments at the moment. New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. Last week, uh, our students in grades three, four, and five completed the ELA math sections of the assessment. This week, uh, today and tomorrow, our fifth grade students will also, uh, participate in the science portion of that assessment. In terms of the middle school and high school, um, I believe beginning tomorrow, we have the middle school, uh, complete, actually, May thirteenth through the sixteenth, the middle school will be completing the language arts and math sections. And, uh, on May nineteenth and twentieth, eighth grade students only will complete the science portion. For the high school, we have the dates of May sixteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first. Selected students will complete the ELA math and science portions of the assessment. Just a note of welcome tonight, um, here with us at the meeting. It was the first day for our, uh, new, uh, MHK principal, Dr. Albluga. Uh, so she experienced the first official day. She's been here as she's been transitioning, but today was the first official day. So definitely pleased, uh, for her to make that transition to our district and the middle school. Look forward to, uh, working with her, supporting her as she begins to, uh, lead the middle school, uh, moving forward. At next month's, uh, Board of Education meetings, go to the June ninth, we will recognize and celebrate those individuals who are wisely, uh, retiring, uh, from the East Windsor Regional School District this year. Uh, as, uh, keeping in tradition, due to the recognition, we'll begin the meeting on June ninth at six PM. We'll have it in the same location here. Also on June ninth, um, we will provide an update regarding the Student Safety Data System, also known as SSDS, which is a requirement through the New Jersey Department of Education. We'll have our, uh, district's anti-bullying coordinator, Lauren O'Brien. Uh, she'll provide a quick update. It's twice a year that we're required to do this. Districts across the state are required to do it. Uh, and there are kind of reporting windows. So in terms of the Student Safety Data System, uh, it collects two types of information uh, from school districts throughout the state. First being incidents of violence and vandalism, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Also weapons offenses that are reported, uh, substance offenses, uh, not including tobacco, um, restraint, seclusion, or any other incident leading to a student removal from school. Also, uh, part of the process talks just about any kind of hip trainings or professional development or hip prevention programs that we have within, within the system. So in terms of the reporting windows, um, Mrs. O'Brien will be reporting on period one, which collects the data from September first, two thousand twenty-four, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, the reporting window, uh, for that is from January first of this year through June thirtieth. So she'll be reporting that out, uh, during the month of June. And then we have, um, period two, um, that we need to submit to the Department of Education. That date is, it kind of runs from January through the conclusion of the school year. That needs to be submitted within the system by August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. And then, uh, districts are then required to kind of report out and communicate that with boards, uh, between the dates of September first and this, and December thirty-first. So I'll provide an update regarding when we'll do the period two communication, but definitely period one will happen at the next meeting. As a reminder, um, been sharing this in recent weeks, due to us not needing to use any emergency closing days this year, we have built three into the calendar. Um, and since we did not need to use any, and we would be kind of peeling away in terms of when those would be nee- needed, uh, it did create an extension of the Memorial Day weekend. So in addition to Monday, May twenty-sixth, uh, schools will also be closed on Thursday, May twenty-second, Friday, May twenty-third, and also Tuesday, May twenty-seventh. Uh, kid care will also be closed during that time period. And all schools will reopen on Wednesday, May twenty-eighth. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions? Okay, there being none, we will move on to our first opportunity for board member comments. Do any of the members of the board wish to speak? Okay, there being none, we will have our first opportunity for public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Okay, if you so to speak, approach the podium and, um, state your name and address. And if you can also sign in on the clipboard on the, to the left of the podium. And it'll be helpful to press the little button on the bottom right of the speaker console that'll light up the red dot, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
All right. Can you hear me? All right. Uh, Jay Garuso, East Windsor. Uh, good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. After a recent discovery on Wednesday, I have come forth with a letter directly addressed to the administration. I learned the decision was to mandate the quota of students for elective to run to fifteen. I do not fully know the reason for it, but I'm aware of the outcomes that directly resulted from this change. On Wednesday, my counselor told me that three electives chosen for my senior year would not be running. The reason being that none of the students have signed up to fill the new quota. The three electives are honors broadcasting, meteorology, and graphic novel. I find it hard to believe that there is a lack of interest for these classes, primarily with honors broadcasting, as I know that many have expressed their interest in that class. But this recent change has created a great expectation that no less than fifteen students must sign up for it, which is very unreasonable for certain classes. The journey to be given the privilege to be afforded the choice to choose honors broadcasting has taken years and specifically required me to take video production my freshman year, throws and chills in the classroom studio in my sophomore year, and narrative film in film beyond reality in my junior year. And now I am suddenly forced to look for alternative electives while also having that choice taken away. It has not only made me disappointed, but greatly frustrated. For the past three years of attending Highstown High School, I have chosen electives that I found to be very intriguing, not just classes that were rumored to be easy. Inevitably, every year, news would come months later, usually in the summer, that those electives were unavailable and I often be forced to pick new electives, even though the choice were very limited at that time of year. It has happened to me on multiple occasions and is upsetting and confusing, particularly this year, since this was an honors class that acquired prerequisites that took time to take. I have also talked to other students, including those I've known for a while, who have also expressed their confusion and frustration about honors broadcasting and other electives they want to take next year. And it makes this decision very confusing and very hard to understand and accept. I would like you to reconsider this choice, especially as it relates to honors broadcasting. A s- a class I've waited to take in my senior year.
Thirty seconds, please.
The cancellation was very unfortunate and unfair to students who signed up for a next year and continues to create confusion for me and other students trying to get their schedules in order from their counselors. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Could you please sign in on the clipboard next to the?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Okay, there being none, we will go move into our executive session, and we will be away about twenty-five, five, so about thirty minutes. Thank you.
...
Okay, we now resume our regularly scheduled meeting and we will start with item seven, old business, and we have our committee meetings listed there, and I believe Michael has an update on us for curriculum.
Yep. So yeah, the curriculum meeting tonight, and what's that again? They presented some information about high school electives. Just giving us a timetable about the, they began working on the elective selections, the beginning of the calendar year ahead of the year they will before. They use the term roller coaster describing how still certain electives are run in odd even years to ensure either that they are not over or under saturated based on demand. Talked a little bit about courses in the commons which allows students a chance to kind of check out the electives that are available. They clarified that under fifteen requests for an elective consider shifts that elective to be undersubscribed and most likely will not run in that calendar year. And they went over the number of electives that are running next year and the number of electives that were not running, and some detail around the broadcasting program. There's been some recent questions around the honors broadcasting class, which was brought up today, and public comment as well, that it's undersubscribed, but it's an elective driven by prerequisites, and there's concern around the unavailability of that class for this upcoming year. They are introducing a new class, it's broadcasting sports news and entertainment, it's a full year, non honors level class, but they're hoping that it's on the agenda tonight for us to approve the addition, and they're hoping to use that as a feeder program into other broadcasting electives. They went over summer programs. It's a continuation of what I think was some pretty great programming we've had the last several years for rising first through second grade, there's literacy programs, rising three through five math and literacy, rising fourth gifted and talented program, there's rising first through fifth literacy and ESL program running this summer, an extended school year program for all students in district with an AEP. There's a rising sixth through ninth ELA class and a math class as well for four weeks, so hopefully those students can get some extra help. There's also some enrichment opportunities, rising sixth grade, there's pre-algebra readiness class, rising eighth, there's an advanced science readiness class, AP enrichment, STEM edition is happening, rising eighth has an ELA advanced class to help students acclimate to what an advanced level class might look like. Rising ninth grade, there's a first time honors prep for people getting ready to go into high school honors coursework, and then there's a multilingual learner enrichment class for rising sixth and rising ninth students, just four weeks of supplemental learning to reduce language loss over the summer, and there's a repeat of last year's summer music program for fifth to eighth graders, four week class culminating in a concert. There's ninth through twelfth grade credit recovery, opportunity for students to earn credit for up to two classes using an online program, online platform called Apex. And then, rising freshman, there's a, there's two opportunities for a three-part day, day of the life of a RAM, where and who do I go to, and team building, and on the second of the two days, there's going to be a barbecue. Which sounds fun. Middle school schedule changes, they are going to be modifying the world language program of seventh and eighth grade to an every other day schedule, effectively cutting the, those classes back to roughly like half. Yeah. So it's effectively they're getting, instead of two full years of education, it'll be a one-year program spread over two years. And then the, the alternating days would become a day for additional electives. And that's the summary. Did I catch everything?
I'm looking forward to the music camp, which is, you know, always has a great concert at the end. Yeah, it's July twenty-fourth.
They need to find a way to incorporate a final performance for some of the other classes. Mathletes or summer mathletes, that's not a thing.
Regarding the world language at the middle school, what precipitated that? What was the reasoning behind cutting those classes to middle school students only having one year of world language prep?
There's a host of reasons, I mean, I don't want to use the word cutting, really kind of redefining the program, I mean, I'm actually, I've never been in a place where you've had world language every day as a middle school student, this is the first time I've experienced that. So I think the issue is recognizing two-fold, one, it's treating the, you know, the standards from the state talk about students being exposed to world language at the middle school level, obviously we want to make sure that we're preparing them for high school transition and the world language graduation requirement. You know, having it every day, one could argue that this theme is an academic course, there can be some discussions surrounding that. One could argue that it has an academic base, but I think it's usually approached from kind of a cultural immersion, and they're using that language conversationally. We're also dealing with some of the realities of shortages regarding world language teachers, I'm going to be completely honest with you, so when we're looking at balancing class sizes and creating an environment where we believe we've got an adequate number of teachers, but also balancing numbers within those other unified arts programs, this just appears to be, not a cutting, but something that we think is a little bit more meaningful, and streamlining the process as it relates to a two-year program, so there's a host of factors there, we think this is something that is good for kids, we think that enables students at the middle school level to kind of engage in a marking period worth of some exploratory options, expanding that unified arts offerings because it does open up another block. So ultimately we believe, and also the other piece is when we're looking at the data in terms of students having two years of world language at the middle school, where they should be theoretically ready for the year three transition, that hasn't been the case in recent years, to be completely honest with you, so we have not seen that level of student readiness, having the two years, and it could be a host of factors, I think sometimes there's an apprehensiveness of taking that leap when students are transitioning to the high school, but we just haven't seen that bang for buck in terms of, you know, world language every day for two years, and then propelling students in large part when they make that transition to the high school.
Follow-up question then, in terms of our teachers at the high school, will we be revamping, not necessarily the curriculum, but the pace of what they're learning and where they're starting, like basically starting at ground zero on day one of freshman year with world language if they're just learning a little bit, they should probably do a review and go from there, or are we going to look at how we're teaching the students?
It will be ground zero, I mean, students are going to have two years, which is still, I don't, I don't want us to discredit what having two full years of every other day delivery of content would be, so that would, it's not ground zero, but we would assess their readiness when they're exiting from the, from the middle school to determine the appropriate recommended placement for the high school.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Any other questions? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to item eight, our second opportunity for board member comments.
I know Mark mentioned the concerts last week, but I bow myself at all three of the concerts, which, just because of the blended seventh grade band situation with Wind Ensemble, which I thought was a really excellent way to, to give parents who have some of the straddles in any of the grades to be able to see, you know, those, you know, a grade level that they may not be familiar with, but being in a building three nights in a row for those three concerts is probably the most exciting thing I've seen in this district personally, I know there's plenty of great stuff happening, but because I've got two kids in the music programming, watching... Yeah. But it's, it's, you know, I, I'm an arts guy, that's what I know best, so it's, I don't ever want to come off as one note, but being there three nights in a row, all those kids, all the instructors, the work that Libby has put in is so incredibly impressive, and I, I can't, I can't express just how happy I am to be part of the district with a program like that, and I know it's not the only one, so it speaks, I think, to the DNA of what's going on, that we're able to provide, some people might not necessarily think is a core academic pursuit, but I think it's so incredibly important that we support the arts, and thank you for all you do and what the whole team does to support that.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, then I'll offer our second opportunity for public comments, any members of the public wish to speak? There being none, we'll move on to item nine.
Mandated policies for second reading. A, policy fifty-one eleven, eligibility of resident, non-resident students. B, policy fifty-four sixty, high school graduation. C, policy fifty-five twelve, harassment, intimidation, or bullying. D, policy fifty-five thirty-three, student smoking. E, policy seventy-four forty-one, electronic surveillance in school buildings and on school grounds. F, policy eighty-five hundred, food services. G, policy ninety-one sixty-three, spectator code of conduct or interest in elastic events.
Second. Any questions?
Yes, I actually have questions for three of the policies. The first one is policy fifty-five thirty-three. On page one, paragraph two, it talks about any other matter, right? So, policy fifty-five thirty-three, when it talks about smoking? And it's page one, paragraph two, and it says any other matter, so it says lighted, and then it says any other matter. Yes. Right. Mm-hmm, so... Right, so, I guess, two parts, so lighted, does it have to be lighted? And then, any other matter, is, does that consider, you know, because people can smoke on anything, right? So does that talk about those items also, is that what any other matter means?
So a couple, this, this piece just in terms of breaking down kind of like what they're defining, what the policy is overseeing, when we're referring to smoking, it's, it's when you're typically inhaling something that's lit or coming from a device that you have to inhale something, so I think the matter is, is like a catch-all, you know, if you're engaged in something that you're inhaling or smoking, that may not fit that criteria.
But then what if they're in possession of it, but they're not smoking it?
That's a different, that's a different violation, yeah, that'd be a different issue.
Okay. All right, so then, when we look at policy, thank you for that, when we look at policy seven, four, four, one, and it talks about, on paragraph two, it talks about the recordings can be in student records. Can you explain that? Is it only disciplinary proceedings that can be in the student record if it's on video? Or is it anything that can be in their student record as long as they're on the video?
Let me put it this way, we're not actually going to put the video in the student's record, but it's almost like these be, these board meetings, right? The fact that we record them, and then they're accessible, one could argue that someone would like to say what Jean Borjoli shared on May twelfth is part of her record as a board member, okay, so therefore it's something that can be pulled as evidence to substantiate something that may have occurred, because there's visual proof, right?
All right, thank you, and then the last one is policy ninety-one sixty-three. Two, C, right, so two talks about the board prohibits unsportsmanlike conduct, C says entering the field of play before, during, or after, but if the event is happening and they attend, how is that a violation? And sometimes, like I know for me, I like to go to an event early, right, to be the, you know, to like get a parking spot or whatever, so the person can get, it could be a violation if the person arrives early?
No, this is referring to actually the field of play, so it's, you know, we're talking about a basketball game, you know, we don't want spectators on the basketball court itself. If it's a football game or a soccer game, we don't want spectators on the field of play. You know, something like this just happened in the NBA recently, did you see that? Where, where an excited father of a player entered the court at the end of the game, and it created some, some tension, that's, that's what it's referring to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Pull the board, please.
Ms. Borjoli.
Yes.
Ms. Drake.
Yes.
Ms. LaRusso.
Yes.
Ms. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Weeks.
Yes.
Ms. Lans.
Yes.
Item ten.
Mandated regulations for second reading. Item A, regulation ninety-three twenty, cooperation with law enforcement agencies.
Second. Pull the board, please. Any questions? Pull the board, please.
Ms. Borjoli.
Yes.
Ms. Drake.
Yes.
Ms. LaRusso.
Yes.
Ms. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Weeks.
Yes.
Ms. Lans.
Yes.
Item eleven.
Recommended policies for second reading. Item A, policy thirty-seven zero one, plagiarism. Item B, policy fifty-seven ten, student grievance.
Second. Any questions?
I do have a question, so my question is, these policies, how are the students made aware of them? Are they in the handbook, like when they enter school every year, or are they expected to look online to see them? Like, how do they know about them?
Pretty question, plagiarism should, should be in handbook, at the secondary level, it's referred to, we also have an AI policy now that's also referring to plagiarism within that, so I will double check, but I'm pretty confident that the plagiarism, a reference to the plagiarism or integrity policy is in the handbook. Student grievance, I'm not sure, I'll double check on that, but we should make that, you know, not that I want to promote student grievances, but, but I do think you're right, I think right now, student grievance probably just lives in our stress estimate policy portal, which is accessible online, I'm not sure if that's in the handbook.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Pull the board, please.
Just, yeah, I had a question, sorry, it's okay.
I'm sorry.
I wanted to get back to the grievance process, it says return notification, is that normally through email, or do you actually need a paper copy signed by the initiator, or like an email format is accepted, I was just trying, it didn't say specifically, like, what, what?
Could you just tell me where you are?
I'm at, person in writing B, let's see, what is it, second level?
Oh, second level?
Yeah, and it says like any documentation grievance given to statement.
Oh, it's just putting something in writing.
Not, but does it, is it like email, or is it a paper copy, that's what I meant?
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, it's just that they want to go beyond verbal, so it just has to be written down.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Pull the board, please.
Ms. Borjoli.
Yes.
Ms. Drake.
Yes.
Ms. LaRusso.
Yes.
Ms. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Weeks.
Yes.
Ms. Lans.
Yes.
Item twelve.
Motion to approve routine items by exception, having read the materials received, I move that the board approve the routine agenda items as submitted. Item A, staffing for May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Item B, HIV report from April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Item C, approved new field trip sites for upcoming trips. Item D, approved three new HHS scholarship opportunities. Item E, technology recycling batch number fifty-six. Item F, approved new high school course broadcasting sports news and entertainment. Item G, travel unrelated expenses, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Item H, surplus property wheelchair. Item I, out of district placement. Item J, co-op purchases. Item K, tax levy payment schedule for twenty twenty-five and twenty-six. Item L, tuition agreement for the Roosevelt Borough, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Item M, transportation agreement with the UCESC, MCSSSD, ESCNJ, and MOESC. Item N, resolution authorizing the use of state contract and cooperative purchasing programs for full year twenty twenty-five and twenty fifty-six. Item O, Bergen County co-op membership. Item P, approval of professional services for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Item Q, approval of proprietary providers. Item R, charitable contract renewal year two. Item S, accept twenty twenty-four audit. Item T, transportation bid results. Item U, approval of remote board member participation. Item V, board meeting minutes for April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Item W, executive session board minutes for April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Item X, revised board minutes, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Item Y, report of board secretary and financial report for... Item Y, report of board secretary and financial report for March twenty-twenty-five. Item Z, expense and transfer reports of school monies report for March twenty-twenty-five. Item AA, bill list of May twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. Item BB, job description, maintenance supervisor.
Second.
Any questions?
I just have a comment. On F, for the new high school course broadcasting, sports, news, and entertainment. I just want to say that I think it's great that we're revamping that course in hopes of getting um other students interested in it. However, it doesn't really take the place of honors broadcasting and the students that really wanted to take that class and cannot take it.
Any other questions?
Uh, yeah, I need some clarification on something, um, Paul, uh, if you can help me out. Uh, section S, accept twenty-twenty-four audit. Uh, they had some issues, uh, and they had findings regarding some health benefit plan, and the employee's deduction was not calculated correctly, or something like that. Do we have an actual software that automatically does this, or we have to do this manually?
No, for the most part, it it does calculate for us, otherwise we'd never be able to get it done. What we have to do, though, because of the software, if if you could, thank you. Um, if you're a first-year employee, we do have to do a manual calculation. So, of the probably six thousand calculations that are done throughout the year, of course, the way it works, the auditors found one. And that's just the way the cookie crumbles sometimes, so it's in there, it's duly noted, and we'll, you know, we'll make sure that we double check and triple check our work. But it was one instance out of about six thousand that we do a year.
Another one I had, where they had the reconciliation of the student activity funds, student body activities supposedly. They were not, package was not submitted, and not reconciled. Did we have this similar issue in twenty-three, because this is related to twenty-four? I don't remember seeing this.
Which calendar are you looking at?
I'm looking at uh twenty-twenty-four, uh, dash eleven. Student body activities. A district assurance dispersment package contains all pertinent information including invoices, um, checks, requests, and approvals, and so forth.
Yeah, that actually wasn't a finding, so what they actually have to make is statements in there that they reviewed and everything was acceptable. So that wasn't a finding, actually.
Do we need to keep it in there, then?
Yes, so there are certain statements that the Department of Finance maker auditors actually uh affirm to the positive that things are happening. So that report is just not necessarily up compliance that something's not happening and should be. They they have to make positive statements that things are happening as they should be.
Alright, thank you.
Hi, I have a question on uh L, uh tuition agreement for Roosevelt Borough. Um, it talks about uh their funding is not going, I'm sorry, their costs are not going up. Is there is there a reason for that? Is it because um we own our buses?
So, um, the board made a decision seven years ago to hold the Roosevelt funding flat in the form of tuition and transportation. Uh, the decision that was made at the time is that, you know, we were not really crammed for space, so it's kind of found money. And with their financial distress, I mean, every year, I'm surprised they have another year in them to keep on going. Uh, that that was just a decision that was made back in the day.
Just so, that that decision is not cemented. The board would like to revisit that discussion, certainly can. And we don't really have a, I think we have a forty, about forty students Roosevelt, enrolled from grade six through twelve, total. So it's not a huge number of students, so.
It's about like two kids per grade level.
Alright, thank you.
Um, I also had a question or clarification for item F. Um, this new broadcasting course, will we not run that until twenty-six, twenty-seven? Or will it be offered as like an augmented curriculum for our existing broadcasting course for twenty-five, twenty-six?
Good question, we're looking to offer it, just go back to Nicole's point, Nicole, point well well taken. The goal with this is obviously we're looking to expand the feeder system for honors broadcasting, so we can have what we think will be a viable number. In terms of this course, we are looking to offer it for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, so we will deem to be kind of a reconfiguration or revision to some coursework that we currently have, uh, related to um TV production. So, the goal is to offer it uh for the upcoming year.
And will our guidance counselors be reaching out to students who have expressed an interest in video production?
Definitely.
And maybe didn't take it yet, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Pull the board, please, oh, sorry, Nicole.
Just and just to 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 get it on the record, is there an active process happening right now to review the enrollment for the honors broadcasting class? Because I know there have been a couple of questions around um the accuracy of the number of students that were recorded as requesting the class?
I'm not I'm not familiar with that, there was an accuracy issue, but.
There was a note received that the 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 feedback was that only eight students had registered, but their student was not in that list. And I just want to make sure, if if there's any additional outreach that can be done, just to see if it's possible to run that program?
Um, I believe that that's already happened, but I will definitely follow up to determine, is there anything we've uh not considered as it relates to uh determining whether or not that that cour- course can run, as far as I know, we've done that. Um, and uh, in terms of that the eight versus nine thing, I'm not sure, I mean, there, not to get too in the weeds here. But sometimes when, when when this determination is made that the course is not going to run, um, sometimes students, we've we've determined the student won't be going in that direction, and it kind of gets pulled away. So I'm not sure exactly what occurred there, but uh in terms of the question regarding, I think, if there's anything else we can explore, I think we've been doing that, but I I will confirm with the high the high school guidance department to ensure um that the eight or nine is um kind of exhausting who we believe may have some level of interest in that course for the upcoming school year, and also the prerequisites that are in line with that. Um, I mean, that that's part of the conver- the larger conversation is, um, yes, we 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 obviously wanted something closer to fifteen. Obviously, we would work within that. Uh, we currently have, I believe for this year, sixteen students enrolled in that course. The larger question uh that we're asking is, you know, what is, what potentially may be steering students in other directions that may be eligible for that course? Um, you know, we heard tonight, it could be some circumstances, with maybe some juniors that that were eligible, but decided for various reasons to say, I'll I'll wait on that. So so we're not really in the process of trying to determine, why do we go from having sixteen students enrolled um to now, uh, you know, eight or nine students who are potentially exploring that course for the upcoming school year? Why was there a drop off there? So, there's a host of factors related to it, but but we are in the process of trying to determine what we think. The main ones are that we can course correct.
Is there ever a time, and and I understand, you know, that there most likely will not be because it is an AP class? Um, is there a time where, in order to be able to run a class, you would look at people who are close to meeting the prerequisites? Who within the next two years need that class to fulfill an arc, to be able to either?
I'm not sure, I mean, typically, typically, we wouldn't, I mean, if we've got, if you've got a student that didn't take a prerequisite, if you take it out of this coursework, you typically are saying, especially at the honors level, you know, we don't want to set students up to be unsuccessful. So I think that, um, I think that we would want, we'd like to take a look at the number of factors, but I don't think we could say just because you're interested in something absent having some evidence, a prerequisite understanding, that we think will put you on a trajectory to be successful. Um, I think um, that will be difficult for for us to take a look at. I think at times, though, you're right, we do look at um situations where we we want to have a kind of a broader sense of criteria for what we think a student's eligibility might be. Uh, I think and I think we constantly try to do that, but I think we we definitely don't want to uh do it in a way, we want to do it in a way we feel a sense of responsibility in terms of putting a student in a good situation. So, there are definitely times where we um, when we look at kind of like the, you know, the the multiple criteria that could make a student eligible, we're engaging in some of that work right now with our summer programming, obviously, different content, different level, but we are looking at students that we think are close to meeting um eligibility eligibility for certain advanced coursework, and we're providing some support to get them there. Uh, but I I never want to look at it like as a one, a a one-pronged determination uh for that to occur. So for this, it will be a little bit difficult, because you have to have some coursework that you needed to complete in order to be eligible for uh this particular course.
That is my concern, and I don't I don't want, I'm not, I don't want to just focus on this, because I understand there's probably, there's other classes that don't need the requirement to run, but it's just, it's it's a little concerning, just, you know, hearing the public commentary, both, you know, through email and speaking here. Um, a requirement for completing this track that people are working multiple years towards being able to achieve, or unable to get to it.
Yeah, my my only my only counterargument is that, you know, we can engage in a conversation about, I mean, there's over twenty courses that aren't being available next year under the elective umbrella, so I I understand that this is creating some attention. But if we're going to have a discussion that I shared with the board before, if we believe that the class should run with eight students in it as an elective, let's have a conversation about what that means. Because we can't just cherry pick a course to say, for a host of reasons, we're going to run it. If the board wants to engage in a discussion regarding the number of students that we think should be the viable number for a course to run, and we have to talk about that, we have to talk about the budgetary implications of that. And we have to talk about being able to staff that. So, uh, we can definitely talk about, are we offering too many courses? We can have that conversation, can we talk about potentially looking at some courses, and 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 I do think we need to engage in this, and I share this with Nicole, where we do need to take a look back to say, you know, if we were looking at some courses over two to four-year window that we believe have have been under-enrolled and therefore not running, um, you know, what does that mean for us? Should we be looking at maybe combining courses, like we're trying to do something right now to create more of a feeder? So I do think it's a, you know, we we're offering courses in the program of studies because we think they're worthwhile, they fit a student's pathway. Uh, we want to make sure there's an element of interest there. Um, but the reality is, there are electives, right? So, when you have electives, that means students are electing to take them or not. So some of those courses aren't going to uh have the requisite number of students in them, in order for them to be a viable course. So that's the piece that I think we definitely need to reflect on, but I would hate for the conversation to to be, or the narrative, or the takeaway to be, that we're being somewhat unfair to honors broadcasting, when there's a host of other courses that we're not offering due to there not being enough students who signed up for it, so, um, so I'm I'm, you know, I'm definitely open to getting a sense of, like, we can, we can talk about having too many courses, and then we can reduce the number of courses that we're going to offer, and I think we would also face some backlash potentially because there may not be enough offerings. So I think it's probably striking that balance. Um, I think the 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 piece, the main piece right now related to this particular course is that, I think the question, the first question is, why, if it's so popular, why do we only have eight or nine students sign up for it? And what are some of the competing factors there that may have deterred a student, uh, or or maybe had that student place their energy in a particular uh different direction? In terms of the the situation regarding the student who talked tonight, I think it's a very legitimate um uh issue in that student's regard, because the student was eligible to take the course as a junior, for whatever reasons. Um, I'm not sure if it was advice provided by whomever, but the student decided to wait until the senior year to take the course, now the course is not available. That is a, that's a, that's a frustrating circumstance, and maybe we need to have a conversation about, um, you you know, and this course historically has been something that's been available. So once again, I think that the the initial question just needs to be, why didn't we have that same level of draw from from students? And is it something that we can avoid? Uh, is it something that we may have created as it relates to students having other options available to them? So I think we just have to kind of go through that analysis to determine, uh, you know, obviously, this was not deemed as a roller coaster course, as far as I'm, as far as I know. So therefore, I think that probably lends itself for a student to think, I can wait, and then and for it to not be available is unfortunate. But I I would venture to say there are probably some other courses that also fall under that umbrella, so I think we just need to take a look at our elective process kind of holistically, to get a sense of those courses that are not running for this upcoming school year. Uh, I think outside of one, I think, you know, once again, it's just for the upcoming school year, it doesn't mean they're gone forever. But I realize for a student that needs it or wanted to take it, and this is their last opportunity to do so, that that's a that's a concern. But I venture to say there's probably some other courses and some other students who are also experiencing that, so. Uh, I'd love it if students could get what they want, right, the choices that they're, that they've uh selected, especially when it's on a particular trajectory, as it relates to some advanced coursework. Um, so we'll take a look at it kind of in the bigger picture, to get a sense of what we can control and what we can avoid uh moving forward.
So, looking at the ones that are not running from what was presented today, six of them are either identified as AP or honors. So my question is, focusing on that cohort, I understand that an elective class is an elective people are choosing. An AP or an honors course with a prerequisite load means that there's a student on a track, and I get that 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 population is going to diminish over time, always, because they're going to be winnowing down their choices to hyper, you know, hyper-focus on a specific area of study to prepare for college. And, you know, we're talking a fairly small universe of kids that are kind of filtering through this level. Um, so what can we do for those six classes that are not running next year? To ensure that those students, if they're going into their senior year, are getting a level of support to be able to work on that expertise level they're looking at as a a key component of their college applications?
Yeah, what I'd say is, we have to take a look at that, because just because those are AP and honors courses, it doesn't mean that those students, it doesn't mean that those courses are always geared towards a specific student's journey. What you'll find is with more advanced, students who select advanced coursework, you know, oftentimes when they get to senior year, uh, sometimes it can create the opportunity for them to uh look for some other experiences in their senior year that may not be as rigorous, um, or they may just feel like they've got their pathway set, and they want to actually engage in some electives that can be something that kind of broadens their horizons, or something that just can be part of the curriculum that they may not have dug into, so so we'll take a look at that. Um, I don't want to be irresponsible tonight, but I don't want to equate the fact that some honors and AP courses are not running, electives are not running, with something that's preventing students from, um, you know, something that's enabling them to kind of pursue some post-secondary experiences. If that's the case, we do need to take a look at that, I think our counselors do a great job in terms of navigating students towards what they think is most appropriate as it relates to the courses before them. So I do know that the counselors engage in 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 alternative options for students, if it relates to something that may not be offered. Typically, we we, you know, I'd say that we we generally actually have kind of, I don't want to say kind of like a a replication, but I know we have some commonality with some coursework, so if one avenue may not be available, usually there's something that's comparable, that enables you to still kind of pursue that. But I want to dig into that a little bit more, just provide a more responsible answer to that, okay?
Yeah, and I I'm only using this because this is fresh data that we were provided right before committee, so, um, but just.
Yeah, we could definitely share that, yeah, you know, based on what I know about the high school students, I I don't think, uh, obviously, you know, honors broadcasting conserves an example that probably will run contrary to that. Uh, because we don't kind of have like this parallel honors TV production type of course, but I think for those other areas, there is there is something that's an alternative. But I'll I'll uh take a look at that, and I'll definitely get back to the board with something a little bit more definitive in terms of what that means.
Yeah, because like, like, just as that example, honors broadcasting and honors narrative filmmaking are both not running. And if I look at the courses that are running, there are no honors or AP classes in that category, so.
Yeah, and I used, I said that would potentially be the exception.
Right, so, just to give an alternate, there is there is no alternate, even as a retake for additional credit or anything, so.
Right, so it just speaks to, you know, in order to have a class, you need students in the class. I just say that, you know, I just say it, and you just do, and we can have a conversation about the minimum number. I just say that, you know, I just say it, and you just do, and we can have a conversation about the minimum number. It's just, you know, we just have to have that discussion, because I can't just, I can't support it for just one course. That will be the standard for all electives, and I just think we'd have to engage in that discussion and and the lack of sustainability that will come along with that. So um, so I definitely will revisit this and provide the board with a little bit more of a definitive update in terms of where we are.
Okay, just to follow up, and I've talked to you about this extensively with the we we do offer an extensive list of of electives in high school. Um, if you could get back to us just on maybe there is too many choices, or um, I don't know, is it something in terms of students being more involved with a particular thing, whether it be honors broadcasting or or a business class? Um, it can't just be the students just trying to like, what else is being done by the school? It can't just be the students trying to get other people to take the classes. Something that the teachers are doing? Is it something administration is supposed to be doing? Is it something that counselors are supposed to be doing? For all of the classes that aren't being run, whether it be that there's too many choices? Is it a scheduling issue? Is it the teachers that are teaching it? Is it the material that's being taught? Just if we could just have a follow-up on that.
Yeah, so so just so I'm not misunderstood, I did not make any insinuation that it's a student issue.
No, that's what I meant. No, that's what I meant.
Well, you said, but you said that.
Well, then I guess you.
I'm not blaming the students. I'm saying.
No, I'm saying that you're blaming the students. I'm just saying that there's not student interest, but there has to be a way for the students, other students to be involved or know about the classes. I know, I think this year, was this the first year, or have we done elective like a fair?
What, the courses in the comments? They had the courses in the comments.
Was this the first year or have it been done in other years?
I I don't know. I don't know.
I didn't know that. My kids didn't tell me about that.
But but in terms of, I I think there's, it could be a a few different factors. I do think we have a lot of elective options. And so therefore, we do, and I I don't wanna put a the the onus on teachers solely, but and we had this conversation as well. I mean, you know.
Right, I don't think it's just, I don't think it's just one. It's not teachers or students.
No, I'm just saying like, students typically um are are going to sign up for a course under the elective umbrella, that they have some level of uh, especially as you kind of uh uh elevating in the grades in a particular level, it's gonna be based on some level of interest that you have, or something that you believe is on on a pathway to a potential post-secondary experience. Uh, and and what happens is students do have choices. So the question is, right, if if someone is not choosing a particular course, it doesn't mean they may not be interested in it. It it could be that they may have more interest in something else, or it may be that they've actually experienced some of that course, and they believe that they'd like to delve into something else. So I think that the reality is, is this is just a reality. There's always going to be some electives that don't have enough students. I mean, that's just, that's just the, that's high school USA. So I do think we need to still take a look at that and and look for ways in which we can blend, merge, combine. Um, but teachers understand, and the administration will support that, and maybe we can go to greater lengths to do it. But 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 there is a selling that comes along with the course, especially when when students have the ability to choose something else. That's just, that's just the reality where we are. So I definitely will make sure we take a look at what we're offering. And I think we do need to engage in an analysis where if we've got some courses that have not been um populated, I think we need to ask ourselves why. And I think you're right. I think there's a host of factors that may uh contribute to some of those issues. I wanna make sure that if there's any barriers that we may have uh as a as a system, then we wanna make sure we remove those. We're talking about an honors course or an AP course, or obviously we're talking about prerequisites, but I think the larger issue is here. Uh, it's student interest, and and those interests sometimes can can be in various places. So I think uh, so we'll take a look at it. All right.
Yeah, I, this report that you have from the curriculum, is that a public information? Or I don't know which courses are in or out. Where would it be posted, if any? Like, if I am a parent going in high school and I see, like, prior year they had X amount of AP classes, and now I'm looking at the curriculum this year, how do we get this information? Like, who?
Well, but you know, it's an ebb and flow. You may have an AP course that's not available this year, but another AP course is available.
So where is this information?
Well, right now, information regarding courses will be specific to your child. The courses are in the program studies. All of the courses that are available, that students could select from, are contained within the program of studies, which is a publicly accessible document on the website.
It's on that.
Yeah, so it just says we're going through the course selection process. The courses are are, you know, students can avail themselves of those courses, but when the when the dust settles, and we start to actually look at who's actually signed up for a particular course. Yeah, we definitely wanted to run honors broadcasting. We didn't have enough students.
No, no, I was just trying to find out where this information is.
Where the courses are.
And we like, when you, you know, you're right, it's a number of these kids who are participating in the course study. But now every year it's gonna differ, because you're not gonna get X amount coming one year, like you said, any class. I'm not, I'm not picking one. So now, is that program study that updated every year to reflect what is offered now? Or do they write it's added, or it's uh removed due to something?
That's a good question. So what I'll say is, you know, um, for example, even though this is, we're talking a lot about honors broadcasting. So we'll use honors broadcasting as an example. You know, honors broadcasting is not going to be removed from the program of studies. It's just a course that appears will not run for for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. It doesn't, the course is not canceled. It's not vanished. It's just not running at this point in time as we move forward. So um, so so the program of studies contains all of the courses that are approved to be available. So we would rarely erase courses. Sometimes we update, modify, um, and through updating the curriculum, we may change the title of a course, and it takes the place of something before. But just because something like those courses that are actually not eligible to run, the twenty-four courses or so, uh, we'll take a look at those, but I but I anticipate, we're not looking to, unless it's something that just has not had traction for multiple years, it appears that they're not vanishing from the program of studies.
Just to clarify on Chagruti's question, I think maybe that's what you're asking. Those courses that are not eligible to run at the moment, I'm, my perception based on my experience is that guidance counselors are telling students, and and it trickles down from there. Um, is there anything beyond that that's being done to notify parents? Parents are not being told. It's just the students being told?
I'm not sure. I know that the first places the student, uh, and and oftentimes you the guidance counselor communication with the student indicated that particular course or those courses aren't available. And let's talk about some other things that you were looking to do. I don't think that's always an immediate parent communication. It could be, but I don't think it's always the case.
I think the issue here comes to, it's like you start freshman year, take one course, then you follow. There's a train track that you're following. You're going up, 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 blah, blah. This is very strange that you're not getting those same people who were on the track. You're right, they're probably wanna experience something else. But it's a very different number, like, you know, you have X amount, and now we're jumped down fifty percent. Like, all of a sudden, they don't, they're not interested in broadcasting or any other classes, because they're putting their time for the three years to qualify with this last course that they, it's it's very strange.
I I don't think it's strange. I think I think it comes down to choices. So I I I have to be honest with you. I mean, um, it it comes down to choices. So I think we'll take a look at that. I do think we we have, um, I think we should do that for any course that's not being offered for the upcoming school year due to under enrollment. I think we should ask ourselves why. So that that's my only question. I think we just need to engage in that process. There's a host of factors, but I definitely think it's helpful to be able to articulate why we think it is. So I will I will uh provide the board with some more uh thoughtful feedback regarding that, so we're not just speculating. All right.
Thank you.
Mark, one last question. I'm sorry. Um, for our feeder, um, can you re- refresh my memory for the rising ninth graders? Like, I know they receive the program of studies, but is there anything hands-on? Are they coming up to the high school during their orientation and meeting with students who are taking electives? I know we do things about the clubs, but do they have any um one-on-one opportunities to speak with existing students about electives that are being offered? Is that something we could add to the orientation?
One-on-one? That would be, that's a difficult undertaking with four hundred students, but definitely when they have the in the in-person experience, which is kind of, you know, it's usually in around March. So slightly removed, but they do have opportunities to obviously visit the high school as rising freshmen. Uh, I do not believe, I think they also have, um, I believe our rising freshman parent night. There used to be uh some information regarding what those options were. But I I don't know if there's any direct communication with students regarding electives. I don't, I don't think so. Um, but we can, you know, we can take a look at at what that means as it relates to uh the elective process. A little different for rising freshmen um in terms of the elective process, but uh we can revisit to get a sense of what that may look like. But but to answer your question, I don't believe we're engaging students in one-to-one or one or smaller discussion regarding elective choices. All right. Now, it may, it may anecdotally occur when they're here and 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 the peer leaders are engaging with them. Uh, I think it's more of a broader conversation regarding electives in the process, but in terms of uh some smaller, more in-depth discussion, I'm not sure. But I I'll double check on that.
Okay, maybe something more purposeful we can look at. And then, when is the last time we actually had a curriculum fair? I know we used to have them, but I I don't recall if we've had one since COVID or.
We haven't. We had, the last one we had was in two thousand nineteen.
Maybe that's something we could look at as too, and then students can get excited about what comes next, and just something to consider.
Well, the the curriculum fair, I mean, I experienced it once. I will say that it definitely was a meaningful, but 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 heavy lift. Um, I think I think the 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 notion was, can we kind of make pockets of experiences to to engage the community as it relates to some of our uh instructional offerings? So COVID played a factor into it, but but I think the larger issue was, it was almost like, is there a way we can do this a little bit more of a micro packaging versus the macro? The macro was great because you had a chance to see elementary through high school, uh, both um, you know, from a from a core curriculum, but also a co-curriculum uh standpoint. It was just um a lot to digest uh in in one evening. So I think we can definitely revisit uh conceptually uh what that looks like. I think we've kind of fragmented things in certain nights, and now you've got like STEM nights and and certain things. But uh we can definitely look to revisit, at least take stock in terms of what we think we currently do that resembles that. Uh, in terms of engaging in that process in the same way that it occurred, um, the last time I recall was my first year here. Uh, we can have that discussion. I know we 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 did definitely talk about that, and it it just felt, uh, like I said, it felt like a heavy lift, and we weren't sure if that was the most meaningful uh use of energy. We can definitely revisit that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do have one question for um, oh geez, I'm sorry, for why? In the um, in the report, for the federal funding, it says eleven cents. It says the inter uh governmental federal is eleven cents. It's line, um, I guess in assets, it's one forty-two.
Which report are you looking at? The board secretary's report?
Uh, yes, I'm looking at the.
What page number?
First page.
Page one, line one forty-two.
Mm-hmm. And this is eleven cents.
What's your, what is it?
I just don't, yeah, I don't understand what eleven cents is for.
It's probably just a miscellaneous amount that's due from a federal um federal source.
Also like they, they all ask eleven?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hold the board, please.
Ms. Brazoli.
Yes, but abstain from you?
Thank you. Ms. Drake.
Yes.
Ms. LaRusa.
Abstain from X, yes to the rest.
That was X?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lanz?
Um, it's, uh, item, line item G, abstain from the information related to myself, but yes to everything else on line item G. Abstain from V, W, and X, and yes to everything else.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, we have no need for a second executive session this evening, so that concludes our regularly scheduled board.